Okay, I can now please say. Can you give everybody else space for a little bit? I'll do it. Okay. I'm hurrying, I'm hurrying. Nope, there it is. Place I'm checking off here, oh. I'm try- yeah, I'm trying to get it all in half back the order.
Oh, okay.
Did I have a thing? Okay, bye, Camber. All right, I'm like, I'm like. It's gonna be a gang, I see. Oh, that's right, yeah, I used to be so long, I tell you, she's home, she's wearing shoes. Well, we get them.
Rise for the regular scheduled meeting of Warren County Commissioners, Blaine Wilcher presiding. Please keep all cell phones off or on vibrate. Please remain standing for the prayer and the pledge to the flag.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask Teddy Jones, Minister at the Church of Christ at Blood Springs, to come up and lead our invocation.
Hello, spring. Heavenly Father, we are so thankful that we have an opportunity to come together as a community, to make decisions, and we're thankful that the leaders have seen fit, that we take some time before the meeting to bow and to ask for your guidance. Heavenly Father, we know that there are so many things wrong in this world, mainly from the sin and mistakes that we have caused in this world, that so sin scarred, but there are so many good things in this life and in your creation still. We're thankful for the blessings of Warren County, the rich soil and the hard-working men and women, and all of those that love this community. We pray that you would continue to bless each and every one, and we pray wisdom to all of the commissioners tonight as they make these decisions and ponder these ideas that are brought forth. Help us to always understand that even though you have made us all different, and we all have different opinions, we are still all your children, and that we all understand that we serve under you. We ask for your mercy as we're able to show mercy to others. It's in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Thank you if you would remain standing. At this time, we have Sergeant Paul Ruderseal with us to lead us in our pledge, and I'm gonna go over a brief history of his military service. Paul served in the US Army. He was E-5 Promoteable Platoon Sergeant, 326 Chemical Company, Redstone Arsenal, Huntsville, Alabama. Served eight years. Awarded Humanitarian Medal for surviving Hurricane Katrina while saving our troops during storm and security detail afterwards, August 2005. Iraq Service Medal, 2005 to 2006. Army Commendation Medal for providing security as a certified escort working directly with Iraq local nationals to provide safety, providing safety for redistribution point with military issue gear and tracking throughout Iraq, and working directly with the civilians with training to continue those efforts after our deployment. Two-time Army Achievement Medals for Training Troops and Leadership. His certifications: Two-Time Combat Lifesaver Certified, Range NCO, L4Q Biological Point Detection Operator, CBRNQ Chemical-Biological-Radiological, you're really testing me here, Paul, and Nuclear Specialist, Expert Marksman, Qualified Bayonet and Grenades, Multi- Multiple Land Cruise Weapon Qualified, M2 50 caliber Mark 19 Automatic Grenade Launcher, 249 Squad Automatic Weapon, M136 Rocket Propelled Grenade Launcher. Okay. Claymore Mine, only deployment was volunteered for Iraq and gone for 545 days. He volunteered. One team, one fight, hoo-ah, and I know who to call if I need somebody. If you would, please lead our pledge, Paul.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your hide, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all, and hoo-ah.
All right, with that, I will call this meeting to order, and call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell.
Here.
Carl D. Bolden.
Here.
Carl E. Bolden.
Here.
Harleen Brown. David Dunlap.
Here.
Randy England.
Here.
Deborah Evans.
Here.
Steve Glenn.
Here.
Stephen Hilton. Robert Hennessy.
Here.
Brad Hillis.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Daniel Owens.
Here.
Casey Owens.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
Kristy Ross.
Here.
Scott Ruble.
Here.
Tommy Savage.
Here.
Tyrone Spartman.
Here.
Joseph Stouts.
Here.
Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Blaine Wilcher.
Here.
Twenty-two present.
Twenty-two present. Next item is the adoption of the docket.
Move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Commissioner Ruble.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hennessy. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next item is reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, to make motion, we dispense reading the minutes in the section as presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner England, second from Commissioner Savage. Anybody want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next item is public comment. Executive Haley, all right. Then we'll move right into special recognition. Executive Haley.
And our community has been blessed for many years with support agencies and organizations that add to the quality of life and make our lives as elected officials much easier. And one of our support agencies, which is really part of Warren County Government, is Upper Cumberland Human Resource Agency, our HRA. And so, the 14 counties that are served through UCHRA, we do have a local office here that's in this building. And over the last year and a half, two years, it's been critical that those doors remain open and those services remain, not only just public transportation, the new deviated routes, but also the assistance that UCHRA does, including commodities giveaway that we did a week or so ago at Northside School. And the leadership in the office here is extremely important, not only out of the Coogville Office, and Mark Farley and his staff does an exceptional job, and of course, he oversees not only the UCHRA, but also the Development District as well. And so, they play a vital role in services to all of our residents and citizens here, including a recent donation of two lots for Habitat that belong to the district. So, tonight, I would like to recognize the leadership of someone that I work with nearly every day, back and forth, and that is Carrie Baker. And so, if she would come forward, we'd like to recognize her for her leadership and role in managing this office and keeping the services rolling and keeping all of our residents happy every day. We know how hard that is. So, you may want to recognize some of your staff here today as well.
I have Tomlin Barnes here with me. He does our go route, and he says we keep the wheels going.
Rebecca, of course, is a huge part of the office operations.
Rebecca is the client that everyone comes in and sees, me or Rebecca. We help people with the rent. I think we did, well, actually, I have the numbers, but we did like, I was just gonna give you a quick thing. We, Mr. Haley helped, we did 312 commodities this month, which Rebecca helped with that. This month was the largest month in our go route, the knee route. Our numbers from January to now was 6,365. For a knee route, we're really impressed and excited about that. I don't know if you're aware, but Warren County is the second biggest in transportation out of the 14 counties, which we're really proud of that. Just this month, in September, we did 1,840 trips. So, that's going to Nashville, that's going to Manchester, that's going to Tullahoma, that's going to Coogville, and on Wednesday, we go to Chattanooga. And our phone, we have five lines, and we ring all the time, and we're happy to help those people. And just something I thought would be interesting to you, we helped 101 people this month in September for electric. And just a dollar figure, that's $25,280. So, people that would've been without electricity, that was $9,900. And just regular torch future bills, that was $13,650. That's with the Office of Three-N Transportation and man Rebecca. I think that's pretty amazing. And we have 25 drivers. So, it's just not me, it's our whole office, and we're very proud of them. And thank you.
It is a teamwork and a team effort, and so Carrie's always been extremely good about calling meetings and getting the policies in place to help our residents. So, it has been a blessing over the last year and a half, so.
If you want to, Executive Haley, you can do the executive report.
Executive report as well, that's next on the item. You got my report, a couple of additional items. Of course, we did dedicate the music pathways, the Tourism Development Board did, last Monday to Dottie West there in front of the chamber, which was well attended, including by several of Dottie's family members, including her granddaughter Tess. The General Assembly is in special session now, and they will be calling another special session to address some of the mandates that have been coming out of Washington. We are working with workforce, Upper Cumberland Workforce, to get a reentry coordinator with our jail, and they'll be stationed here, but they'll be servicing the whole Upper Cumberland. We are trying to work with TCAT to find a location to do a CDL Truck Driver's School here in Warren County, and we've been chosen for that program, and if we can find a location, we should be able to start in January. So, TCAT is expanding a lot of their programs. We are through the workforce development, looking for an in-house facility or factory or industry that could provide daycare to employees, but it's one of the critical things, to get people back to work again. So, been working on that as well with the chamber and workforce. We're also looking at an expungement clinic to work on as well, for people to try to get their record straight, so without felony charges or some other charge, they can go back into the workforce. And then, glad to announce that we've received two grants for our archive space downstairs, and we'll be recognizing Ann Brown later as our new archivist. So, if you've got any questions about anything in my report, I'd be glad to answer them. I will be making some announcements later.
We have some motion from Commissioner Prater to adopt, and a second from Commissioner Glenn. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is the Finance Department Director Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, you have my report. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
We have a motion to adopt from Commissioner Stout, a second from Commissioner Sparkman. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next is Warren County Animal Control and Adoption Center Quarterly Report.
I'm Lisa Morton.
Good to see you, Lisa.
I'm filling in for Sherri.
Yes.
She's on vacation this week. We had 95 in-house calls, 105 cellphone calls, 28 walk-ins, 70 emails, 72 Facebook messages, 30 road calls, off-site road calls. Our adoption fees was $823. The monetary donations was $50. We took in 25 dogs and adopted 16, and we took in 25 cats and adopted 16. And right now, we have 30 dogs, 36 cats, and we have 12 in foster. And of the dogs, we have, or court cases, we got 21 dogs and three cats for a total of 24. That's part of our court cases right now.
Move to adopt. We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble. Second from Commissioner Sparkman. Anyone want to speak to that? Commissioner Savage.
Ms. Morton, any of the dogs that were picked up, were they in violation of the leash law?
Yes.
Well, their owners, were they cited at court or anything?
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next is the Health Department Quarterly Report and Director Andrea Fox.
Good evening. Each of you should have my report, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have.
We have a motion for Commissioner Stouts, a second from Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Next is the IDB Quarterly Financial Report, and I know Mr. Don Alexander will not be here tonight, and he asked me to let you know, if you have any questions, you can give those to me, and I will get with Don and get you some answers. Move to adopt. We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble. Second from Commissioner Sparkman. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. And next is the Warren County Planning Commission Quarterly Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lee.
We hadn't been meeting a lot here lately, but if there's any questions you have, if Commissioner Glenn and I can't answer them, we'll get you an answer as soon as we can. Thank you.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bell, a second from Commissioner Taylor. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? One thing I meant to mention early on, but I'll do it before we go into committee reports, is because going into, especially when we get into new business tonight, I may be wrong, but I think there's gonna be some debate, and I want to ask everyone to really observe parliamentary procedure and make sure you're recognized, because the chair will be swapped, and make sure that you only speak once until everybody's had an opportunity to speak. And that way, hopefully, the process will go as smoothly as possible going forward. And that could even happen here in these committee reports. I know at times, we have questions about those. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. All right, first is Budget and Finance. Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got one thing. Justin was informed this month, earlier this month, that the second round of the Governor's money, which is a little over $400,000, has to be, and Justin and I are still not sure yet, committed or spent by June 30th of next year, and we'll be working on that in the near future, and that's all I had to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Building and Grounds, Carl Bolden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget and Finance met out at the airport last, I believe it was last Thursday evening, and there's a lot of things that needs to be done at the airport, and we've got a list of those things, so we'll be bringing them to your attention in the near future. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Economic and Agricultural Development, Carl D. Bolden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Economic and Agricultural Development has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Next is Education.
Education Committee has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Stout. Next committee is Financial Management, Executive Haley.
There's nothing extra to report, except we'll be probably... There's nothing extra to report, except we'll be probably scheduling Budget and Finance and Financial Management for some other considerations for financial.
Thank you. Health and Welfare, that is myself. We did elect officers with the exception of Secretary, and we will do that at our next meeting. Other than that, we have the resolutions we'll review here shortly. Highway and Bridge, Commissioner Prater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I talked to Levy this afternoon. He's finishing up the bush hogging for the year, and he is going to bid everything out, I think, here in a few days for the next year. And what roads he didn't get paved this year, he promised me he would get right on the first thing next year. And Highway and Bridge is going to meet Thursday at 4:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Legislative Committee. Is anybody here to represent Legislative?
I mean, I didn't receive a message or anything from Chairman Brown.
Okay.
So I would assume at this point, we have nothing to report.
All right, thank you. All right, next is Policy and Personnel, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On September 28th.
Okay.
And we voted to discontinue the ADIers for COVID-19, voted three to one. And we elected Officer Stephen Hilton, President, myself, Vice President, Tommy Savage, Secretary. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Safety, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just happened to be in Sheville today on some business and went by, and our brand-new ambulance was supposed to be picked up today. I thought about driving it home, but Preston would have probably had a cow if it was gone. But he was supposed to pick that up today, and it really looks good, and we really need it, the miles we're putting on our ambulance. Just thank you so much for this court to support our EMS.
Thank you. Next, County Corrections Partnership, Commissioner Stouts.
County Corrections has nothing to report at this time. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. And next is Redistricting Committee, Commissioner England.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have been meeting a couple times, and we are getting the ball rolling on redistricting. And we're close. Matter of fact, we'll be having a third or fourth meeting this next Tuesday, October 26 at 5:00. We put down an early voting room, but we may have to change it over here to the Magnolia Room, so we can use the television to, but we're real close. Anybody, I would encourage you to come. And be next Tuesday, but we're real close to maybe getting something we can bring for the full commission.
Thank you.
5:00 next Tuesday.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go into new business, and I will ask the Chairman Pro Tem to come and take the chair as I go take my seat at my district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And with that, Item 1 is Resolution 15-2021. Health and Welfare Chairman Wilcher will be presenting that, and I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would like to read Resolution Number 15-2021. Whereas regulations which establish humane standards for the sheltering of dogs are important because they provide a clear and minimum standard of care, which in turn protects dogs from harm, and whereas TCA Code 5-1-120 authorizes and empowers counties to regulate dogs, and further that TCA 5-1-121 authorizes and empowers counties to establish monetary penalties for violations of rules and regulations established by counties, and whereas establishing regulations for standards of sheltering of dogs inside Warren County, Tennessee is a substantial step toward increasing the quality of life for the dogs of Warren County. Now therefore be it resolved by the county legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, meeting in regular sessions on this 18th day of October 2021, that Section 1, that Warren County, Tennessee establishes the following standards for the sheltering of dogs inside Warren County, Tennessee. Section 2, that no dog shall be permitted outdoors while unsupervised for more than eight hours in a 24-hour period or during any inclement weather unless the dog has adequate shelter. Section 3, for the purposes of this resolution, adequate shelter shall be defined as an enclosed shelter house with three sides, a roof, and a floor with appropriate bedding. Crawl spaces under buildings, decks, and homes shall not be considered adequate shelter for the purposes of this resolution, and neither shall any shelter built from materials which degrade easily by the elements and/or carriers and crates designed for temporary transport. Further, any shelter with chain-link flooring shall not be considered adequate shelter, and automobile shall not be considered adequate shelter, and neither will a shade and/or coverage provided by an automobile. Section 4, for the purposes of this resolution, inclement weather shall be defined as an outdoor temperature that is below 32 degrees Fahrenheit or an outdoor temperature that is above 90 degrees Fahrenheit. Further, this definition shall also include abnormal weather events such as severe hail, snow, wind, dust, or otherwise. Section 5, that any violation of this resolution shall result in a fine of $50 per occurrence. Section 6, that this resolution shall become effective upon passage, the welfare of the county requiring it. And before I put that in the form of a motion, I wanted to make a statement. Early on, I was asked, or I asked, the Warren County Animal Control and Adoption Director if this was worth pursuing. When she said it was, then I set the wheels in motion. As a committee, we have discussed this and made revisions and discussed it even further for several months. County Attorney Robert Bratcher said it has had as much work put into it as any he has been involved with. I also spoke with our sheriff last night, and he said he supported it. Actually, he said he supported both. In Section 2 of both resolutions, the word "unless" separates violations and the proper conditions. These violations will assuredly continue unless we abide by the regulations set forth in these resolutions. Unless we start somewhere, this type of behavior will not only continue, but will be taken as accepted or not worth fighting for. I, for one, choose to fight. Not because of any effect it may have on me being elected or re-elected, but because it's the right thing to do. Mr. Chairman, I ask that correct parliamentary procedure, as I mentioned, be followed during this debate, and no one speak without being recognized, and only once, until all commissioners have been able to speak, and I hope for a second opportunity before we vote. And I put this in the form of a motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Wilcher. There was a second. Who was that? A second by Commissioner Dunlap. Okay, is there any discussion? Right, if no discussion, I think it...
Mr. Chairman, I didn't understand what you said. You was looking the other way, and I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Chair recognizes Commissioner Savage.
Yes, I do have a question. The state statute covers all these things. At what point, when you find a dog that is sheltered inadequate or abused or whatever, is this going to be turned over to the DA's office? You know, a $50 fine on somebody that's starving a dog to death or leaving it out there in the open or whatever, is simply not enough. And three months ago, when a lot of this was talked about, I think it came back to Ms. Bradley, and she said she just didn't have the manpower to enforce all this. So what has changed in that time? Respectfully, I asked all this. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilcher, if you'd like to respond.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Savage, this has been spoken about several times, and this doesn't add to or take away from any state law. Basically, what this is, this gives the Animal Control and Adoption Center more tools they can use to where, in other words, if a neighbor notices a dog, for instance, that their chain is wadded up in a ball, and they probably are on about one foot of chain at that point, they have another tool they can use to go out and check the welfare of this animal. I agree with you, the fine could be higher, but if we have a higher fine, that could result in more court cases, which would be more cost for the county. So this is the direction that we chose as a committee, to go in, to keep the fine at $50, to prevent that, and hopefully educate the people that would be in violation of this and help them instead of cause more damage to the county financially.
Thank you, Chairman Wilcher. Any more discussion before we vote? Chair recognizes Commissioner Ross.
Yes, I would like to point out that there has already been work in progress to write grants to help citizens become compliant with, should these resolutions get passed tonight, to help them be compliant and help negate that cost. And Ms. Cox has assured me that that is the truth. Is that accurate, Ms. Cox?
My name is Holly. I'm with Governor Andrew Warren, County. She is correct.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Without being registered with the Executive's Office, you won't be allowed to speak. But Commissioner Ross, you can convey that.
I had spoken with Ms. Cox earlier, and she said that in fact, grants are already written and ready to go, should this resolution get passed tonight, to help negate the cost to citizens that are trying to become compliant with this resolution.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner Evans, I believe you want to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Commissioner Savage's point, when Animal Control Director Sherri Bradley said she did not have extra manpower, I just wanted to point out, in the many meetings we've had since then, it has been determined, we will not actually need extra manpower, although Animal Control could always use more manpower anyway. These two resolutions will not result in extra manpower being needed. They don't change any laws. They instead define the laws so that, I'm going to give a brief example of a dog who was under a deck, trapped on a tether, on a chain, in freezing water. And because there was no specific definition, that was considered adequate shelter. Whereas I believe everyone would agree, that's not adequate shelter. And I know people love their animals, and they often need help, and the grants will help that. But I did want to point out, no extra manpower will be needed. It is simply a tool. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Any more comments?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other comments, I would like to reiterate what Commissioner Ross said. I've been told that Humane Society, as well as HAWK, and other volunteer groups are standing ready with resources to help. If you remember, a few years ago, we had the same battle when we wanted to make the facility a mandatory spay and neuter facility. And I heard a lot of the same arguments. Well, it's going to cause people to not bring their dogs in, or our adoptions are going to go down. Wrong. They went up. It educated the people, I think, and the result is, you see it, when you see the amount of donations they have through adoptions each month, it continues to be high. So I think this will be the same effect. It will educate the people and help a lot of animals that otherwise won't have any help. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Wilcher. Chair recognizes Commissioner Bolden.
I'd like to ask Blaine, what about farm dogs, guardian dogs? I've had great pair of these out with the sheep and goats and stuff. What do we do about that?
Thank you for that question. Me and Sheriff Myers talked about that last night as well. Some animals would rather sleep on the top of snow. I've got a neighbor that has one. That's a totally different situation. We're talking about animals that actually need shelter. And Sherri, thankfully, we've got a good director that knows the difference in breeds and what they want as far as shelter and what they need. That wouldn't be an issue. And I do want to ask that the vote be in reverse order if possible.
Chairman Wilcher has asked that the vote be in reverse order. Does anyone object to that? Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, on that reverse vote, against standard procedure, so it'd take two-thirds to suspend that.
Wish that to be voted on, Chairman Wilcher? Lisa, I think that would be more of a roll call. If you would, please call the roll.
Starting at the top, right?
Yes.
Michael Bell.
Yes, we're ready. We're going to vote to suspend the rules.
Correct.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
David Dunlap.
Commissioner Dunlap, we're voting to suspend the rules and allow Chairman Wilcher's request to invert the voting order. All right, yes.
Randy England.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
Yes.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
Yes.
Kristy Ross.
Yes.
Scott Ruble.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman.
Yes.
Joseph Stouts.
Yes.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
Yes.
Blaine Wilcher.
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 22 yes.
Okay, 22 yes, that's unanimous, so we will be voting in inverted order. If there is no more discussion, Ms. Scott, please call the roll.
Blaine Wilcher.
Yes.
Cole Taylor.
No.
Philip Stout.
Yes.
Joseph Stouts.
No.
Tyrone Sparkman.
Yes.
Tommy Savage.
No.
Scott Ruble.
No.
Kristy Ross.
Yes.
Gary Prater.
No.
Casey Owens.
Yes.
Daniel Owens.
Yes.
Gary Martin.
No.
Ron Lee.
Yes.
Brad Hillis.
No.
Robert Hennessy.
Yes.
Steve Glenn.
Yes.
Deborah Evans.
Yes.
Randy England.
No.
David Dunlap.
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden.
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden.
No.
Michael Bell.
No.
Anyone want to change your vote? 12 yes, 10 no.
Robert, clarify, a tie of the majority of the body is a fail.
It fails because it requires a majority of the elected officials, not those present when you're passing regulatory framework.
Okay, thank you. Motion fails, 12 to 10. And there was a majority, 12 in majority, but it took 13. Okay, Resolution Number 2 is 16-2021, and Chairman Wilcher will be presenting this as well. Chairman Wilcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is Resolution Number 16-2021, a resolution establishing humane standards for tethering of dogs. Whereas regulations which establish humane standards for the tethering of animals are important because they provide a clear and minimum standard of care, and whereas TCA 5-1-120 authorizes and empowers counties to regulate dogs, and further that TCA 5-1-121 authorizes and empowers counties to establish monetary penalties of violations of rules and regulations established by counties, and whereas establishing minimum rules for the tethering of dogs inside Warren County, Tennessee is a substantial step towards increasing the quality of life for the dogs of Warren County. Now therefore be it resolved by the county legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, meeting in this regular session on this 18th day of October 2021, that Section 1, that Warren County, Tennessee establishes the following standards for tethering of dogs inside Warren County, Tennessee. Section 2, that no dog shall be tethered unless the tether is attached to a properly fitted collar or harness. No logging chains or tow chains shall be used as tethers, and no pinch, prong, or choke type collar shall be permitted. Section 3, that all tethers shall have swivels on both the animal end and the tether, as well as the anchor end of the tether. Section 4-
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hennessy. Is there any discussion on suspending the minutes? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Right, minutes. If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Okay, we're back on the original motion, the tethering law, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have just a comment, please sir.
Chair recognizes Commissioner England.
As you know, in our area, we have some people that are great coon hunters, and I worry about them, and maybe I'll get some clarification here. But you know, they buy these dogs all over the United States to come in here and coon hunt with, and they've got several thousand dollars in these dogs, and I dare to say that they're fed better than anything, and they're watered better than anything, and they're very well took care of. But they are gonna be on a chain, and they, you know, most of them, I would say all of them, take care of them so well that they have the swivels on the end and what have you, but I worry about section seven here, where it says that no dog under six months. Reason why is, is these dogs, you know, they get them, you know, when they're pups, and they start training them with the other coon dogs, and they'll be put out with them. Yes, probably on a chain. So, it just bothers me a little bit about that. And I guess refer that to Mr. Wiltshire.
Mr. Wiltshire, if you'd like to respond?
Thank you. Commissioner England, I know that, as we mentioned earlier, concerning certain animals that don't want a house, it's kind of the same situation. Thankfully, we've got good employees out at the Animal Control and Adoption Center that know those situations. This would not be one of them, this would be one where it would be understood what they're doing. And as you said, you made an argument yourself, how that they take good care of them, and they care about them. Those are not the type of animals that we're fighting for, we're fighting for the ones that are on a chain, all day, no break, hot, cold, rain, snow, they knock their bowl over, they don't have water, and they might go two or three days. Like the, a dog in my neighborhood, I drove by and looked at it on the way to this meeting tonight. A dog that needs a break like this, it'd give me a reason to call Animal Control, because I believe they're feeding the animal, but I can tell you, it's changed probably not long enough, and it probably doesn't have a swivel on it. So this is just another tool that we can use to help the ones that are not loved and taken care of, in my opinion.
Thank you Chairman Wiltshire. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Chair recognizes Commissioner Evans.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I understand what you're saying, Commissioner England, however, that is a, that's in the state mandate, the state law, dogs under six months old are not allowed to be tethered. So, those people are in violation of the state's standards already for animal cruelty. However, as I reiterate what Chairman Wiltshire said, our animal control people understand working dogs, there's a total difference, and we are speaking for the ones who are not treated well. Thank you.
Mr. Savage?
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I get calls a lot from people all over the county, that are walkers, and joggers, and professional delivery people. And we have a lot of dogs that are running loose, you know, they need to have the rabies tags, they need to have their owner's name on them, they need to be on their own land. But they're running at will, and one dog starts barking, and here comes the whole neighborhood of dogs. We have delivery people get attacked, and, you know, we gotta have, and we have people walking that won't walk down certain roads. My wife's one of them. And we have joggers, that are world-class joggers, that can only, lots of them has to come to town to jog. And we have, I've seen some of these dogs, you can see them, and some of them does have a big, heavy chain on them. But I've been around dogs all my life, and some of them were aggressive types. And some of them, if you see one's got a big, heavy chain on it, that might be the fifth chain that dogs had on it, they finally found one that they won't break, because those dogs are strong. And it's, I think, there are situations, dogs don't need to be tied, they do need to have a swivel, and owners need to be responsible. But they, some of these dogs, tying them is just about the only way that you can contain them, because those people are not gonna spend money to build a good kennel, they're not gonna buy an underground fence system. I just, I'm afraid if we, if you tell some of these people that they can't tie their dog, they'll turn that dog loose, and we'll be having a funeral, there'll be a child or something get hurt. And I'd just like everybody to think about that before they vote on this. I would really like to see, you know, something done, but state statute, again, covers this right here, and I've talked to the DA's office, and they said that they will only prosecute state statute. And so, but if you turn that big dog loose, instead of dragging a chain, I'm afraid it'll be dragging a child. Thank you Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Commissioner Savage. Any other comments? Commissioner Ross?
I mean, I could be wrong, and I hope Chairman, well Commissioner Wiltshire will clarify, but I don't think it's saying that you cannot tether your dog. That's not what this ordinance says. This ordinance says that what we're trying to accomplish is that it doesn't live its life on that chain. That's what this says. Everybody can tie their dog if they want to, but do it humanly, and as far as the heavy chain, there are some chains that are too heavy for dogs, that can separate their skin from their body. So, that's what they're after, not the person that's tethering responsibly.
Mr. Chairman, only because she referenced me, I need to clarify something. It is not saying anything against tethering in general. It's just saying humane tethering, that is all this is about. Just the simple, simple rules here that we're looking at, as far as swivel on both ends, ten foot of chain, you know, that is, that's what it's saying. It's not saying you can't tether your dog, as we know, you know, a lot of people have dogs that they have to have on a chain if they're not home. It's just saying, don't have them on there if they're in heat, which should be common sense. But it's just basically saying, take care of your animal, you know, it's not saying you can't tether them.
Thank you Chairman Wiltshire. Anyone else want to speak to that motion before we vote? All right, Ms. Scott, the rules have been suspended so that we can vote in reverse order, please call the roll.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
No.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
No.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
No.
Scott Ruble?
No.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
No.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
No.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
No.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-two yes.
Motion passes, twenty-two yes. Next item is item number four, Amendment SF-FY twenty-one twenty-two dash two. Director Cotton?
This is to do the same thing as the previous amendment, but this time for the sanitation fund.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Ruble.
This also passed budget finance, financial management unanimously, and I so move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble, a second from Commissioner Owens, anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, call the roll, please, Ms. Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-two yes.
Motion passes, twenty-two yes. Next item is item number four, Amendment SF-FY twenty-one twenty-two dash two. Director Cotton?
This is to do the same thing as the previous amendment, but this time for the sanitation fund.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Ruble.
This also passed budget finance, financial management unanimously, and I so move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble, a second from Commissioner Owens, anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, call the roll, please, Ms. Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-two yes.
Next item is item number five, Amendment AF-FY twenty-one twenty-two dash one. Director Cotton?
Again, this is the same, at eleven dollars a month increase per employee, this time for the ambulance fund.
We have a motion from Commissioner Stotts, second from Commissioner Spartman, anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartman?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Twenty-two yes.
Motion passes, twenty-two yes. Next item, number seven, Amendment GF-FY twenty-one twenty-two dash eight. Director Cotton?
Thank you Mr. Chairman. This is to allocate funds for the circuit court and general sessions to replace the very old and aging equipment for recording of court cases. Twenty-five thousand of this will be allocated from the governor's grant money, which as Commissioner Ruble said, will have to be spent by the end of the year, or have to be returned, and the general sessions portion will be paid for out of the automation fees that
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman?
Yes.
Joseph Stott?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 22 yes.
Motion passes, 22 yes. Next item is item number four, Amendment SF-FY 2122-2. Director Cotton?
This is to do the same thing as the previous amendment, but this time for the sanitation fund.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Ruble.
This also passed Budget, Finance, Financial Management unanimously, and I so move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble, a second from Commissioner Owens. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, call roll, please, Ms. Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman?
Yes.
Joseph Stott?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 22 yes.
Next item is item number five, Amendment AFFY 2122-1. Director Cotton?
Again, this is the same, an $11 a month increase per employee, this time for the ambulance fund.
We have a motion from Commissioner Stott, second from Commissioner Sparkman. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, call roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman?
Yes.
Joseph Stott?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 22 yes.
Next item is item number six, Amendment HW-Y-FY 2122-2. Director Cotton?
This is the final one of these, this one for the highway fund, just for the $11 a month for their employees.
Move to adopt.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Commissioner England made the motion, second from Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, call the roll, please, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman?
Yes.
Joseph Stott?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 22 yes.
Motion passes, 22 yes. Next item, number seven, Amendment GF-FY 2122-8. Director Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is to allocate funds for the circuit court and general sessions to replace the very old and aging equipment for recording of court cases. 25,000 of this will be allocated from the governor's grant money, which as Commissioner Ruble said, will have to be spent by the end of the year, will have to be returned. And the general sessions portion will be paid for out of the automation fees that the county is currently holding for general sessions.
A motion from Commissioner Sparkman, second from Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, call the roll, please, Ms. Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman?
Yes.
Joseph Stott?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 22 yes.
Motion passes. Next item, item number nine, Amendment GP-FY 2122-2. Director Cotton?
I skipped eight. Did I?
Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry. Amendment GF-FY 2122-9. Director Cotton?
This is the appropriation of $17,560 to replace the gutters on this building. This will also be appropriated against the governor's grant money. This has been bid, and this was the low bid that was awarded by financial management, pending approval for funding.
Move to adopt.
A motion from Commissioner Hennessy, second from Commissioner Sparkman. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, call the roll, please, Ms. Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman?
Yes.
Joseph Stott?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 22 yes.
Motion passes. Next is item number nine, Amendment GP-FY 2122-2. Director Cotton?
Yes, this is an amendment to appropriate $100,000 for the GP schools to essentially loan federal programs $100,000 to act as operating capital in order for them to be able to facilitate the ESAR grants, since they're all on a reimbursement basis.
We have a motion from Commissioner Stout, second from Commissioner Glenn. Anyone want to speak to this motion? If not, call the roll, please, Ms. Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Sparkman?
Yes.
Joseph Stott?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 22 yes.
Motion passes. Next is item number 10, ARP Project Approval Process. Director Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This process went through financial management where it was approved. We have been asked as part of the ARP process for us to document our internal controls and our process for how we will handle those funds. And this is the general guidelines that we would like to establish, have this committee, have this commission approve, so that way we have a framework to work within.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Ruble.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hennessy. Anyone want to speak to this motion?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Stott. Stott, I'm sorry.
Director Cotton, specifically for this committee that's going to be developed, or is being developed, for a distribution of these funds, I wanted to ask, the Tennessee Controller's Office...
...is recommending that the best part of Skyline Bridge County, the House, and upstairs, which you just referenced, would then have the recommendation that that committee could compose the business owners' non-profits and other stakeholders. So, the composition of this committee, is that a bit discussed and approved by financial management here, or will...
This was the recommendation of financial management at that time. If the body would like to add stakeholders who are not members of the commission, I believe that can easily be added to this at this time.
This is just for our internal controls for the, for the county's operation. We're going to be calling a town hall meeting. We've already met with several of the stakeholders already to put together a steering team from that town hall meeting in order to address this. So, that's coming. This is just the internal controls that we'll use within this, with this governmental body, not necessarily the steering committee that the Controller's Office. So, that will come from a town hall meeting that we're going to be organizing.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Ruble.
This, basically, what we would be doing as a committee would be compiling a list of recommended projects onto an appropriation memo. That would then come to the full commission, and we could line item that. This is not going to be a, a total package. This is either, we're going to line item this, and if the commission decides to take this out or this out, then, but this is strictly going to be a recommendation to the county commission. This is not going to be the final say. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is item number 11, the E-911 Board Appointments. Executive Haley?
Yes, we have two appointees for tonight, and Jeff Carter is one of those, and Clint Keyes will be the other recommendation. So, it'll entertain a motion from someone to approve those.
I have a motion from Commissioner Bell, second from Commissioner Taylor. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is item number 12, COVID-19 Policy. Robert Bratcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand Mr. Britton is not here tonight. This is a update on the clarification from his office of the COVID-19 policy, which has a reflection of the removal of the 80 hours contemplated in the last meeting, and instead the provision that employees use their sick leave that they're regularly allocated if they have to take COVID-19 leave.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. There are a motion from Commissioner Savage, second from Commissioner Sparkman. Any other discussion? Commissioner Savage?
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is not to give anybody any more time. This, we do need to keep a policy in effect to try to stop the spread of COVID. Since two months ago, we've lost, our count was at 85. Now it's at 113. That was in the paper yesterday. You know, that's, we're, we're running close to 15 a month. And I know the numbers are going down, but the deaths are not going down yet. And, you know, if somebody's got it, you know, we need a policy. If you've been tested positive, you need to stay away till you get a negative test. I think that's what most of the manufacturing companies are doing. But we need that policy. We don't want somebody to load up on a pain reliever or Tylenol or something and bring their temperature down and come back and infect everybody. So, let people, you have to use their sick days or the vacation days. I'll keep turning my hand. Thank you.
Commissioner Ruble.
Mr. Chairman, rule number one in this policy says all employees are required to adhere to county guidance developed in accordance with CDC, Center for Disease Control and THD, Tennessee Health Department Guidelines. I was speaking with the director of the ambulance service, and Preston and I had a long discussion concerning this, and Robert might want to address this, but Director Denny said that if we have to adhere to the guidelines recommended by, by the Tennessee Health Department and the CDC, he said our employees that are unvaccinated or vaccinated are exposed almost daily to COVID-19. And he said in that event, if we adhere to these guidelines, we're going to have to send every employee home that is unvaccinated. And I'd like to have Robert speak on that.
You know, there's really not much I can say, other than i-if it turns out a lot of people are suspect under the guidance from the CDC or the Tennessee Department of Health, they have to follow the guidelines. I mean, it's true that the infection is spreading and becoming a, a larger pandemic locally here. So, yes, it's, it's completely possible we could end up in a situation where lots of employees are exposed as, or infected at the same time. And, you know, the ambulance service would be one of the potential employee segments that would have most trouble with this.
Yes, Commissioner Ruble. I was speaking to Mr. Denny, which this has been two, three weeks ago, and he said this is, this was his only concern, is if we have to adhere to this policy, he said potentially I could send every employee home that's, that's unvaccinated. And that was my concern for this in the policy. So, that was, that was my question. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I have permission to speak?
Yeah, Commissioner Savage.
One more thing we discussed in policy and personnel. Also, I was looking at my minutes. We, we knew none of these policies are perfect, and, and they will change from time to time. But we, we said it can be readjusted, you know, at 90 days. And I said that at this meeting right here, we might want to make some adjustments to this. And I don't know, we have legal here. He could tell us if we wanted to change anything about this right now.
This is subject to amendment, like anything else that the body passes on, if you have any amendments that could be made.
Mr. Chairman, after hearing this, I think we need to table this and send it back to the committee, and talk to Preston. And we need to cover our ambulance service, because we have to have EMS for this county to control, this not for COVID, but for other car wrecks, strokes, heart attacks. We need some answers before we, I can vote on this one way or the other. So, I'll make a motion. We table it, send it back to committee, and get some answers.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Bell, second from Commissioner Prater, to
table this until it goes back to Policy and Personnel Committee for review. Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. All right, next item is, is item number 13, appoint a county archivist. Executive Haley?
So, as some of you know, we are required by state law to have an archive and to properly dispose of records. That's why you have a public records commission as well. And so, our previous archivist, Jean Hobbs, retired, and Anne Brown was interim archivist, but she has received all the training now. And I would recommend that we, we appoint her as our permanent archivist for Warren County.
Motion to per, motion from Commissioner Ruble, second from Commissioner Carl D. Bolden. Anyone want to speak to that? Not all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is item number 14, Approval of Notaries. Ms. Lisa?
This is the list for the notaries. Valerie E. Giles, Lonnie R. McBride, Kelly Taylor, Kelsey Taylor, Tori Watts, and Beverly S. Smith.
Motion from Commissioner Stout to approve, second from Commissioner Hennessy. Would anybody like to speak to that? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Executive Haley, were you going to make the announcement about Ben Lowman?
You can, and I've got a couple more you can go ahead and do, because you can do that.
You should have in your packet, Ben Lowman, connect, has invited the commission to their 311 North Chantry Street location on Tuesday, November the 2nd at 6:00 for a presentation and a look at their facility and kind of learn a little bit about what they do in the community. So, I encourage everybody to, that can, to attend that, and you have all the information in your packet. Executive Haley?
I think they're trying to organize a tour of the hotel, so as soon as I get those times and dates, anybody that would like to tour that, Don's not here for me to confirm that, so I don't want to give any times and dates just yet until I get it. I do want to also announce, as most of you know, our previous veteran service officer, David Smith, decided to take employment elsewhere, and we did interviews this last week. And I am proud to announce that we are actually going to have a return employee. So, Sergeant Ernest Brenton will be returning as our VSO, as, starting today. So, I gave him the notice that we, he is employed. Couple of other things as well. Tomorrow, the Bowles family will be doing a donation to Warren County. The Bowles family have a medical supply company, and the Bowles family is from here and have been quite successful and want to return something back to our county. And these are sanitizing tunnels that they use in a lot of hospitals and, and, and penal institutions, jails, and also the Titans have them also in their locker room. And the Bowles family are donating two of these, one to the school system and one to the county jail for them to use. It takes temperature, it decontaminates the person coming in or being booked, or the sports athlete that might possibly have been exposed. So, we'll be doing that tomorrow. He and his family will be here and represented from the school system. So, if anybody would like to be here at 10 o'clock tomorrow. Of course, the homeless shelter group, Home, will be sponsoring their event on November 6. And so, at, so if you're interested in attending, we can get that information out to you as well. Would also like to acknowledge that, and I sent out the email, that former